You buying coffee or what?
I will.
Why should we make it up to you?
Maybe something stiffer than that.
I don't know, where are you coming from? Where are you now? Which?
Uh, I'm asking.
No, no. So, I was talking with someone who said, "You know, you keep talking about going on business stuff. How about our public housing? It's a completely black market." So, well, it doesn't create any business. But, I hear you. And if you want to work for me, let's create an initiative to make something.
Hello, everyone?
Hello.
And I feel like a teacher. Hello, class. I didn't have a teacher gonna say that loud. At six o'clock, this is the best voice I've ever had, unfortunately. Uh, I'm, for those who don't know me, my name is Brad Hill and I'm the state representative for the 4th Essex District, which encompasses Hamilton and Wenham. And I'm happy to be here tonight to help people understand what Chapter 40B is all about, to try and educate everybody on what it is and actually to try and educate people what rights you have when a project comes into your neighborhood or into your town that you have once the zoning board of appeals starts hearing about the project. We're here because of Scott Madder, your selection from Hamilton, who I believe is the chairman of your Board of Selectmen, who wanted to also be educated on the law. So, he reached out to Senator Tarr, who is also co-hosting this event tonight. And he reached out to both of us and asked if we could get some professionals to come to Hamilton and Wenham to try and explain to us the ins and outs of Chapter 40B. So, I'm happy to report that we're able to get someone from the Department of Housing and Community Development who's gonna go through this PowerPoint presentation for you. At any time during the PowerPoint, if you have a question, fill in your questions at that time. Because some of this is complicated, there's some acronyms you may not recognize. Feel free to yell out what question you might have. And that's gonna be Philip DiMartino from DHCD. And we thank you for coming out in this storm. We were not gonna cancel tonight because after the last winter storm and then we had another one tonight. I'm like, Bruce, if we do this at the end of April, we have another snowstorm, we're gonna be thrown out of Hamilton and Wenham. So, uh, thank you for coming out. Thank you. We're also gonna hear from Clark Ziegler, who's gonna answer some questions for you and also give some overview from his part. So, with that said, Senator Tarr, you want to add anything before we have Scott say a few words?
Well, first of all, thank you all for coming out in the snowstorm. We really appreciate it. Number two, I want to say thanks to everyone who's come to help us out tonight for Clark and our folks in DHCD. And third, I want to say thank you to Scott for causing us to be here tonight. And then lastly, I just wanted to let folks know when we talk about Chapter 40B, it's important to understand that it's a law that's actually been around a fairly long time, since from about 1969. It's credited with the development of about 59 to 60,000 units of low and moderate income housing in the Commonwealth. So, it's actually been around for a while. And it was created to try to create a counterbalance, mostly at the behest of urban communities who felt like they were carrying a disproportionate burden into creating low and moderate income housing. But here's the most important thing. Many times when a 40B project comes into a community, people feel like they are without recourse. And it's important to understand that there are many attributes of the law and the regulations that were promulgated subsequent to the law that do give communities lots of ways to try to address this issue. And so, it's really important to know what those rules are, to know how you can use them, to understand the process so that everybody can deal with a proposed 40B project in a way that gives them comfort that there's something that they can do to have their voice heard and to have their thoughts about the way something should or should not proceed be taken into account. And so, the primary goal in Chapter 40B is to make sure that housing is consistent with local needs. And you're gonna hear that, I suspect, a lot tonight. And it's a phrase that I want people to stay, keep in their minds about what is or is not consistent with local needs. Because that becomes a very determinative factor, both at the zoning board of appeals level, where the comprehensive permit is first decided upon, and subsequently, if we go to the Housing Appeals Commission at Department of Housing and Community Development on an appeal either way. So, if we keep those thoughts in mind, I think it would be helpful. Thank you again, everyone, for coming out tonight. And I look forward to being part of the program with all of you.
This time, we'd like to introduce Scott Madder, your chairman of the Board of Selectmen here in Hamilton.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out today. And all of you, this is postponed months before. Uh, as soon as I had heard about this possible project, it had long gone away. I went to other towns, found out what they do, how they get their voice heard, and let me start sharing information as best we can. I posted things on our town website. There was a discussion, a town meeting related to that on Saturday. This is being recorded so it can be repeated on television and on demand kind of thing because educational card is really, really important. And that's what I found out is one of the most important things to do. And then more forms or things like this. So, learning, this is job number one. And I know the Delta's room is long, middle, long, middle way. And big, there's already concerns expressed about the size of it, scope of it, location, septic, traffic, access to or not the ordens. So, I know there's a lot of serious concerns there. Go down the indoor display if you don't already live there. It's right in the backyard. So, but the purpose of this meeting is primarily about, what are the rules and regs? How do those operate? How do we begin to influence some degree of control over what might be happening? There's a chance that Andrew Franssau might be here tonight. I don't know.
Yeah.
He's in the back. He's the executive director of hard license book at town meeting. There's a handout that he provided. So, whatever the town gets, we'll try to distribute and make available as quickly as possible for you all. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Scott. So, at this time, Philip DiMartino is going to walk us through this PowerPoint. And again, he's from the Department of Housing and Community Development. We appreciate you taking time to come out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Thank you, Senator. It's okay, just because this is being taped. I think it's gonna be better with the mics if I sit. I don't want to be rude. But I think if I jump around with the mics in between the PowerPoint, I'll probably, I might have some trouble hearing. Can people hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, welcome to 40B. Uh, so 40B is state statute. As the Senator said, it's been around since 1969. So, we're talking 47 years now. Basically, it allows developers to override local zoning if the municipality has less than 10% affordable housing stock. And I'll get into what counts towards affordable housing. The state has a very strict definition. It's produced over 65,000 units. And by produce, I'm also including some of the things that have been permitted in the last couple of years. We're seeing a real uptick in 40B activity. One thing about 40B is very reflective of the market. If you have a housing market like we have now, you're gonna see more 40B activity. If you're in a part of the state that's economically depressed, I'm talking, say, the North Quavon region, Orange, large parts of Western Mass, Chapter 40B is not an issue because frankly, the housing is affordable and the market can meet the housing needs in that part of the state. So, it's really, you know, Central Mass, North Shore, Cape Cod, Eastern Mass, Central Mass issue, or so Eastern Mass. It's produced more housing than any other single program in the Commonwealth. However, which is not a surprise to anyone, 40B is crime reversal. Massachusetts is a home rule state, meaning we've got 351 cities and towns, 351 set of rules. Hamilton does things one way, doesn't mean Wenham's gonna do that. Beverly's something else, Salem's something else. Some towns don't allow any rental housing. Some towns don't have any water. Sewer issue, you know, big sewer issue, so that's a factor. And I think because it's a home rule state, it can create some animosity towards 40B. Back in 2010, it was actually a valid initiative to eliminate 40B. But 40B was preserved by a pretty, you know, solid margin of 58%, 42%. Uh, so what counts as affordable housing? They must be part of a subsidized development, built or operated by a public agency, nonprofit, or limited dividend organization. At least 25% of the units must be income restricted to families with incomes of 80% or less. And for that, this area, these are all HUD data. The 80% for families of four, they just released the data. It's probably, depending on what part of the state you're in, it's probably between 64 and 70,000 now. So, when we talk 40B, we're not talking necessarily public housing, Section 8, 30%. It's not extremely low income. Most people that live in 40B, particularly if you're gonna buy a 40B home, are making a decent income. They're not generally on government assistance, but they, what they make can't, you know, the market won't support the housing. The restrictions for ownership must run at least 30 years and for rentals, it's 15. Uh, the development must be subject to a regulatory agreement monitored by a public agency or a nonprofit organization. So, when these 40Bs come into existence, there's third parties that oversee to make sure that they're complying with the comp permit, make sure that everything is above ground. One thing we did add back in 2001, frankly, the health communities get close to 10% margins if you start counting, started counting group homes through the development, Department of Development Services, Department of Mental Health. And when we say group homes, it's actually a residence. So, if you're in a town that has 52 group homes, that's actually 52 residents. So, they count towards the affordable list. There's been some issues with that as far as some other safe harbors with 40B. These other state agencies give us the addresses, so we don't have the addresses. So, they just say, you know, a town of Acton has 48 units and that's it. But they do count towards your 10%. For sale units, total development cost, somebody comes into your town, builds a 40B, that developer's limited to 10% total development cost profit. And that's, that's something that's been cleaned up a lot throughout the years. And if it's a rental, they can't make more than 10% annually. Now, I know there's been some talk, and I'll be frank with you, I'm not that familiar with potential pending 40B here. But before anything goes forward, they have to get what's called a project eligibility letter. In 40B language, you call it a PAL. There's four agencies that can do that. Mass Housing, Mass Housing Partnership, where Clark is the executive director, Mass Development, and Department of Housing and Community Development. If you want to talk about numbers, it's really probably Mass Housing and Mass Housing Partnership issue the most project eligibility letters. Now, before we even get to that stage about getting this letter, the person who wants to do a 40B would be approaching one of these four agencies. They'd have to talk to them. Once they apply for a public subsidy that's operated by one of these four agencies or funding mechanism, the town is notified. So, in other words, nothing can happen without the town knowing it. As far as someone's looking to do a 40B, the town is now notified very early on in the process. Now, years ago, people would frankly be caught sometimes blindsided or they wouldn't know what was going on. Before a project eligibility letter is issued, the town also has an extensive comment period. They can walk the site. Whatever issues the town has as far as design, local impacts, water, that can be brought up before the project eligibility letter is issued.
How is the town notified when they have the right to start looking at a project which is now at the project eligibility stage?
Well, if they haven't formally applied, the town is notified when they formally apply.
If someone makes an application, we'll take it for a PAL. And then there's a review period in which the public can comment and actually has some input?
Well, the town comments, but they generally will open it up. And people do write letters oftentimes. And anyone in the town can write a letter to one of these four agencies, whatever their issues are. And oftentimes, some of these comments, we get 30, 40 pages of comments from the town oftentimes and then, you know, sometimes hundreds of letters.
I mean, you talked about opportunity to walk the site and to make decisions known and so on and so forth at that stage. Is that correct?
Well, it can happen at a few stages. You know, sometimes the developer and people that are before they issue a PAL will do a site visit. And they can go, sometimes it gets a little tricky because the site is still on the private ownership. He or she may not want 500 abutters walking around the site. And that, that sometimes can be difficult. But the town definitely can, you know, can walk the site. And sometimes these things are sort of known and people do show up. It can get a little difficult at a time, but there's an opportunity to walk the site before issuing the eligibility letter and before final approval, which I'll get into.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
When it goes before the ZBA and there's gonna be a hearing, the neighbors would be notified by a certified letter. Once someone goes for a PAL and the town is notified, does the town then send out notification to the neighbors that they're looking for comments? Or is that up to the town to decide to do?
It's really up to the town. Some towns have adopted different 40B processes and they will do that. Later on in the PowerPoint, there's a section that the, all the abutters, as if any type of normal development, do need to be notified. So, you will receive formal notification. Uh, so, once a developer has a PAL, they can file a comprehensive permit with the ZBA. And the thing to remember about 40B, the ZBA by statute is really the one entity that has formal jurisdiction over 40Bs. Now, other folks can weigh in, other boards can weigh in. And there's a slide, you can, you know, we suggest people send this out to the Planning Board, Conservation Commission. It's a public hearing process if people can give testimony. So, it's not done covertly. But before issuing the PAL, the developer must have evidence of site control. Now, that can be a PNS. They need to actually own the property at a later stage. But nobody can get a PDL unless they have some evidence of site control, which at a minimum is assigned purchase and sale. Now, if you end up with a 40B project, I highly suggest there's something called the Mass Housing Partnership, which is one of the, what we call the subsidizing agencies. Those are the folks that issue the eligibility letters.
Excuse me, what was the name of the partnership?
Mass Housing Partnership. They're a quasi-state agency. They've got a program that gives up to $15,000 to cities or towns dealing with 40B. They'll hire a private, third-party consultant. Basically, they'll walk the town through the process because 40B is its own, as I think the Rep. and Senator said, you know, consistent with local needs. And there's a lot of its own language that's very specific to 40B. And a lot of the ZBAs, people might get on the ZBA and they're used to dealing with decks or minor issues. This is a whole other ballgame. And there's very strict timelines, which I'll get into. So, it brings in a consultant who will work with the ZBA, go to the meetings, get to the extent of even helping draft a decision, working in formal negotiation sessions with the developer. So, if you do get a 40B, I highly suggest applying for this program. And we've seen a lot of uptake in the number of applications coming in for it. So, and the town doesn't have to pay it. When the developers apply for 40Bs, they have to give fairly large fees to these agencies. And that's what we use as consultants. So...
I don't mean to be squeaky wheel here, but...
No.
It seems to me that one of the things that concerns most of the people in this room is the ability to actually hear and to learn about it and then to make their opinions about it as to whether this is an appropriate site for a 40B.
Right.
The minute a project eligibility letter is issued and the minute something is filed with the zoning board of appeals and our view, the case is over. It's inevitable that that case is gonna win at the Housing Appeals Committee because there's an 85% chance that any local decision denying the project is gonna be rejected. And that's just, that's a known fact. So, the problem is, how do you actually stop this locomotive at this point and actually get input from people who care and who actually want to improve the town's affordable housing effort? How do you do that when your affordable housing committee has already decided this is a grand project? It's voted unanimously and enthusiastically in favor of it?
Well, I think...
Before anybody knew?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was no public notice.
Accidentally counted it.
So, what do you do about that? How do you have some public protection?
This is done covertly kind of. And then the public is not aware of this happening. And then you have site control of the land.
Well, I think quickly, two things. Before the project eligibility letter is issued, there's a public commentary. That would be a way to do it. I'm frank, frankly with you, when I learned about the project tonight was when I walked in the room. So, this presentation, and I know it's, we're gonna get into probably some of the nuts and bolts of that project. But the best thing to do is probably before the project eligibility letter is the town then has a formal role. And as far as the Affordable Housing Committee, the ZBA has the jurisdiction as far as permitting, which we'll get into the nuts and bolts. As far as the Housing Appeals Act, there is a concept, you know, beyond, yeah, it's true. It generally is weighted towards, most decisions are in favor of the developer. It's not 85%, it's just below about 70%. But that's, you know, I understand that that's a high percentage.
This law is flawed because it gives all the power to the developer. It gives no power to the town then.
Well, let me try to get through the presentation and get to other parts as far as local control.
Let's call it that and then we'll get to that.
So...
Because actually, that's not true.
Well, you know, we've also...
There's been a lot of input and a lot of...
But what inputs do we have?
Why don't we go through the process first? And then, because there's a lot that needs to happen.
And there's been precedent about, there's been several cases and I'm not saying this will happen, it's more conjecture, where the various subsidizing agencies decide not to issue an eligibility letter because of what's happening in the town, planning defenses. We've had some high-profile issues in North Reading recently. And there's about a half dozen other towns where that's happened. And as far as Housing Appeal Committee cases, Newton just was able to turn down a 40B because of the industrial park and deed restriction, which is something fairly new. So, it's, towns are defenses and there's some safeguards in the law, which we'll get to. Okay, but let's say, for instance, if a town does get a project eligibility letter, what happens? Then the developer wants to have a completed permit application, can apply to the ZBA. And the ZBA is, you know, by statute, the local board that makes the decision. So, within seven days, they distribute the application to all the various boards. They have to post a notice of a public hearing within 14 days. And within 30 days, assuming this comprehensive permit application is complete, they have to open up the public hearing. Now, this is very important. We've had cases where it's not opened up until day 31 or day 35 or day 40. There's some mix-up in the town. And that's why it's important to get a consultant. If that happens, it could be constructive approval, which would mean the 40B would go through right away because they've missed this deadline. So, if something does happen here, be very careful with the timelines. Safe harbor notification. And I'll get into that, but the big one is the 10%. If you're over 10%, you're essentially immune from Chapter 40B. If you were, the ZBA would say, we can turn down this based on this area of safe harbor. The developer can appeal. DHCD, where I work, will issue the decision. And actually, between DHCD answer and closed hearing, there's a sidetrack appeal process called an interlocutory appeal. I didn't want to get into minutia on the slide because it gets a little bit unwieldy.
It's you guys, I have a question.
Yep.
The 10% line. Is there, is there a penalty? Does the town get penalized if they don't get to that 10% mark at a certain? Is there a timeline for that?
There's no penalty for not being compliant with 10% other than you're subject to Chapter 40B. So, it's not tied to local aid.
Penalty.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, that's sort of, you know, I think that's how some communities do it. But there's no, if you're not at 10%, no one's gonna come in here and say, we're gonna, you know, come after school aid or not, you know. There's really, it's not mixed into discussion at all.
So, there can be a gradual, you know?
Right. And then we'll get into...
Get there gradually.
Right. Right.
Excuse me, will you, at some future time this evening, talk about how safe harbor is ascertained? Or what the data that they use to ascertain the 10% rule?
Absolutely. That's the next slide. Good segue. So, if all goes well and good, within opening the hearing and going through the process, the ZBA closes the hearing within 180 days. Now, that's a fairly tight timeframe. But if the developer and the town want to extend the hearing beyond 180 days, and frankly, that happens all the time, that can happen. So, say they close the hearing, say this is not a contentious 40B and they're using a hypothetical. It's done in 180 days. They have 40 days to issue the decision. And then there's an appeal process by the developer to the Housing Appeals Commission. So, this is, these are the timelines. This is how the process is set out via the regulations. Now, a gentleman was asking about the 10%. These are what's called statutory minimum. These all date back to 1969. So, these are the parts of 40B to design a community to give safe harbor. Once you're at 10%, you're essentially off 40B. Now, there are communities that are over 10%. You know, Cambridge of the World, Summerboat, that still issue comprehensive permits because frankly, it's the quickest way to get things through local boards to get the housing built. These are projects that have a lot of political support. We've had some communities over 10% that really want to do a senior housing development that have deep operating subsidies. So, you can still do a 40B if you're over 10%. I just checked before I came out. 48 communities out of 351 have achieved the 10%. Now, that doesn't sound like a particularly impressive figure out of 351, but you have to think, probably for 150 communities, 40B is not an issue because they're depressed markets. No one's doing a 40B in Springfield or Athol because the market is just not there to do it. Also, frankly, the cities have somewhat of an advantage because we count existing public housing. So, if you're, you know, like the Linds of the World, Haverhill's, Pittsburgh, Worcester, Springfield, Boston, they have very large federal and state public housing developments. Massachusetts is one of three states that has state assisted public housing. New York and Hawaii are the other two, if anyone's curious. And so, those units count.
So, you're talking about LHA's?
Right, Local Housing Authority. So, like, you know, and the cities, and that's where part of the 40B came from, was the cities thought they were getting all of the public housing. It was too concentrated. So, that's part of the reason they came up with 40B.
Where'd they get this magic number of 10%?
You know, that's a good question. And I've looked into that. And frankly, I don't know if there was a detailed analysis or somebody just pulled it out. It sounded like a good number. I, this is also, maybe you could go back to the 60s and this is kind of the end of the Great Society, a lot of unrest, social justice movement, that's where it came from. I don't know frankly if they did a lot of, you know, objective analysis and looked at the housing needs. My, you know, they said 10%.
How does agricultural land area...
Right. Okay, so you, which, sure.
Just in order, so, this has been recorded[1574.24]
Just in order, so this has been recorded, so people, other people in town can see, we can just do a quick repeat of the question.
Right, okay. She asked the second one, which you're about to get, the general land area minimum. This is something in 40B that's one of the original safe harbors. Frankly, and I've got another slide on it, it really wasn't used very much until about the last year and a half. And I'll just read it because it gets complicated. Also known as 1.5, when low and moderate income housing, units on the 40B list, exist on sites comprising 1.5% or more of the total land area zone for residential or commercial industry use. There are regulations within 40B that explains how a town figures this out, which are fairly lengthy. A couple of things on this, it's been a real challenge for us administratively to work on this, and it's been a challenge for communities. The issue you just brought up about agricultural land, if it's agricultural land that's under the ALPC, Agricultural Land Preservation Commission, with a deed restriction that forbids housing, that would not be counted towards your general land area minimum. But there's, I could do a whole night on this general land area stuff, I won't go into it, because we're issuing guidance on it. Now, so I'll just leave it at that, but there's another slide on it that'll give you some recent history of towns that have been using it.
Conservation what?
Conservation what? It really has to do with the restriction.
Question.
Oh, she asked about conservation land. Now, if it's land in, just, that's in 61B for tax purposes, so it's taxed lower, but there's no deed restriction forbidding housing, that would still count towards a general land area minimum. But we are issuing guidance on this, we're working with four or five other, well, consultants and other agencies to come up with something, so I don't want to spend too much time on it. I will have another slide about what's been going on. I hope to have it done by June, we've just signed a contract with the consultants. Metropolitan Area Planning Consultant is writing the guidance, and we have another firm called RFKG who is going to do the calculations.
One quick question.
Sure.
What percentage of the town is in that now?
Well, that's a good, that's the next slide, so we're going to get into this next slide, things coming up. We don't keep a detailed land analysis on the 351 cities and towns like we do the 10% list, so I can't tell you.
Can I just add some clarification on what is counted as 10%? Is private housing that is in fact priced or rented, so as to be affordable by people at the 80%?
Right.
Does that count as 10%? Or is the only thing that counts is chapter 40B?
It's not only chapter 40B housing, but there's a lot of things that count and don't count. But a quick answer is, it has to be affordable to 80% of area median income, there has to be a public subsidy involved, there has to be affirmative marketing place, a regulatory agreement, depending if it's rental or ownership, and there has to be some type of public subsidy involved. Oftentimes, I understand why people are confused, you may have a three-family, which frankly rents below what the state would consider an affordable rent, but there's no deed restriction, there's no regulatory agreement, there's no third-party monitoring, so it doesn't count. So it's really, and another thing to think about, let me back up with the-
So some, what you're saying is some towns could be very affordable in a market sense, but if they don't have 10% of their housing stock regulated, then they have to accept 40B?
Yeah, I think the short answer there is yes, yeah. And as far as, one thing to remember with the 10%, and this is one of the ways particularly suburban communities have been able to achieve it, is we count 100% of the rental development. And I'm going to say that again, 100% of rental developments under 40B, if they do 25% of the units at 80%, and there's other formulas if they do, you know, 50%, if you do a lower percentage, higher income, but virtually all the 40Bs that are being permitted now, 100% rental count. When you drive up and down 128, and you see all the Avalons and these big apartment complexes, they're almost exclusively 40Bs. And the developers like Avalon are coming in, they're not necessarily looking for the subsidies, they need the density relief, and they can go and build these units. And the towns that have been able to achieve 10%, you know, the Betfords of the World, been able to get various safe harbors for production, have been doing large-scale rentals. But let me, a lot of this is going to come up in slides, so let me try to get through it. The third one, I'm not even going to go into, because this is part of the, it's a one-third of 1% city towns land area, or 10 acres with a large construction. No one has done this since 1969. I'm waiting for someone to do it, I think somebody probably will try to figure this one out, but this is a fairly obscure safe harbor. It would have to be a very large development and probably a very small town in order to make it work. So this is back to the general land area minimum, this is the 1.5%. We don't keep an analysis where folks are at, so if anyone calls us up, it's on our website, you want to know where you're on the 10% list, and I have slides coming up that will tell you where you are in this district. We don't keep the 1.5 land analysis, it would just be beyond us frankly to do it right now. It wasn't used very much in 2004, we changed the regs in 2008. We had a couple of cases, Waymouth, Watertown, and Somerville. Remember, at that time, Waymouth had the Air Force Base, they were able to use it. Back in 2014, Stonem came in, and had a very controversial 40B on a farm, and they claimed the 1.5%. Since then, we've had Newton do it three times, Norwood, Waltham, and Milton. DHCD, we found that all the communities had not achieved the 1.5%. Frankly, I think Stonem is fairly close, they were at 1.34%. All these cases are on our website if you want to look at them. Newton, their big issue was the golf courses, they had three golf courses, private ownership, a tremendous amount of acreage, they tried to say that could never be developed, where in fact, the underlying zoning was single-family ownership. If any of these folks that owned the golf courses wanted to develop into housing, they could. In fact, Linfield, Linfield Commons, I believe was a former municipal golf course, it's a chapter 40R smart growth district, so there's precedent for that happening. So what's happening now is Norwood, Newton, Waltham, and Stonem appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee. Newton, Stonem were found not to achieve the 1.5%. Norwood and Waltham are still in front of the Housing Appeals Commission, so those cases are ongoing. But we are issuing administrative guidance that to help communities sort this out, because it's been a challenge. It was sort of a sleeper, no one ever did it, but I think once people saw communities invoking it, there was a bit of a flood, so we're trying to get ahead of it, make sure that developers and communities know how to make this formula work. Now, these are other safe harbors, these are things that aren't in the statute, these are things that were added via regulations. One is called a housing production plan, that came back in 2003. Long story short, if you submit a housing plan to us, and you need to have like a needs analysis, you need specific sites for 40B, you want to know what the town is like, your housing needs, demographic analysis. We've had over 100 communities submit plans, which I think is a fairly good number since 2003. Over 50 communities have been able to achieve a certification period. If you do half of 1% or 1%, you get one or two years off from 40B. So in other words, if a town has a certified housing plan for two years, let's say, a 40B developer comes in, they'd still have to take the application, but 15 days after opening up the hearing, the community could say, no, we have a certified plan, and the developer would have frankly limited recourse. It's a voluntary program, a lot of the communities in this district have adopted it, they're good for five years. If your town has Community Preservation Act, you can use CPA funds to pay for consultants to do these plans. Frankly, there's no downside to it, and plans are coming in all the time. It has really forced an alliance sometimes between towns and developers. So say a town needs 50 units to get two years off, all of a sudden, a developer comes in with a 50-unit rental, 100% count. That allows the community the permanent 40B, get it built, and sort of get their numbers up and work towards the 10%, and it gives them a lot more leverage, because if the developer comes in in the meantime, they can just say no. Recent progress, this is outside of 40B, if they produce 2% of 40B-eligible housing, this SHI acronym, I probably should have explained it, it's subsidized housing inventory, within the last 12 months of a permit filing, you could also say no. So if you had a very large 40B, you basically get another year off. Large-scale projects, caps, point on project size between 150 to 300 units, depending on the size of the community, unless the ZBA wants to go higher. So in other words, during the real heyday, I'd say 2003, 2004, sometimes we have very small communities with no infrastructure, and someone wanted to do, you know, several hundred units. Now, there's caps, as far as maximum size, and if people want it later, I've got some of the numbers here, I can cross-reference it with the town, I can let you know what the cap is for your town. Related applications, this is, sure.
Does that suggest that there is a cap established already for our town?
There would be a cap on maximum project size, I'd have to look up the-
It exists, so that's already-
It exists, yeah. I think I wrote that, is this Hamilton or Lennon?
Hamilton. Generally done by population.
Hamilton has, the cap would be 200 units, so they do go up to 200 units, which is a big one for a site. But the, you know, developers aren't going to come in and ask for 300, because they know you could just say no. And they oftentimes will ask for more units than they end up getting, so, but there are caps on the project size.
Do you have what percentage is coming up today?
As far as what?
You said 200 units, how many does Hamilton have today?
I've got the percentages coming up. Related applications, enables municipalities to reject 40B applications, if the developer submitted an application for the same site for non-40B, non-affordable housing development within the prior 12 months. This was put in because we were getting developers coming in, and they were trying to do something, sometimes within existing zoning, sometimes via a special permit, no affordability component, and they'd sort of say, if you don't let me do this, I'm just going to come back with 40B. So now, there's essentially a cooling-off period for 12 months.
Can you explain that in a word more detail?
Sure. Right, so if somebody came in, say, for a development that, to say, complied with your existing zoning, your subdivision law, two-acre zoning setbacks, whatever, and for whatever reason, the town didn't want to do it, or if they wanted a little bit more than it was allowed, or if they wanted to do something, open space residential district, cluster development, things that were maybe outside of zoning, purely market rate, town didn't want to do it for whatever reason, the developer would have to wait 12 months to come back and file as a comprehensive permit.
But you said that's if the town doesn't want to do it?
Well, correct, yeah. Towns, the ZBA would still be handling it if they came in with a 40B. So these are, this is the process to invoke safe harbors, and this is basically, it's the same process whether you're at 10%, general land area minimum, certified housing production plan, you know, and I'll just leave this up here for a bit. So a developer comes in, within 15 days of opening the hearing, the board must provide written notice to the applicant, that's the developer, with a copy to DHCD, that's us, describing which safe harbor has been achieved and supportive documentation. If you're at 10%, that's easy enough, we can give you a letter, or it's pretty well-known. If you have a certified housing production plan, you would have a certified letter from us saying you've achieved your production goals, and you have the safe harbor from point A to point B. The 1.5 is a little bit different, so that's why we're trying to clean that process up and get a formal application. Related application could be an evidence of when they filed for a non-affordable housing development on that site.
Hey, I have a question.
Yep.
So if you, say you meet your 10%,
Right.
And you maybe got some of those through 40B.
Right.
And then this happens, that there's some land that somebody can't develop, and they're approached by the developers, says, hey, you can do a 40B there, you know, because there's not going to be as many zoning laws, et cetera. Can the town say, well, you know what, no, we don't want to do that, we already hit our 10%? Or does the town have anything to say, and say, no, we want to stop?
Well, if you're over 10%, the developer would still have a right to apply for a comprehensive permit, they'd still have to get a project out with eligibility letter. Frankly, if they came to us, and a town is at 14%, the developer, particularly if it's a contentious 40B, is not going to go through that process, because they have to spend several thousands of dollars, have evidence of site control, pay a lot of money to apply to us, go, you know, have a pro forma, have some schematic engineering drawings, that, it's just not worth it. So if you're at 10%, you would follow this process, they could still come in, and, you know, you could deny them because you're over 10%. Or, but, you look confused, so I know-
But I can, you can act in process then.
Right, okay, no problem. So, okay, so the applicant has 15 days to challenge, so if the applicant says, no, you're not at 10%, they could come in to us, we would issue the decision. So we have 30 days to make a ruling, once we have from the town, the applicant, we have 30 days to sort this out. If we don't act within 30 days, it goes into the municipality's favor. During this safe harbor period, it's formed a no, and the other slide, when I talk about the 180 days, this is essentially a timeout, so the clock stops, so the clock isn't ticking until we sort this out. Now, if we have a situation, and this is what's happened in Newton, Stonem, and Norwood and Waltham on the 1.5%, they don't agree with DHCD says, they can go to the HAC, and within 20 days of us issuing a ruling, and file what's called an interlocutory appeal. And the housing, at that point, they're just judging on whether or not they've achieved safe harbor, they're not looking at the entirety of the project. So this is how it would work. Important thing to remember, and that's why it's in red, the safe harbor must be achieved at the date of permit filing, so if you had, and we've had this happen, where two or three communities are dealing with 40B, they approve one, they get 10%, but if you're already, say, four months into the hearing on another project, or four weeks, you're down to 15 days, those projects are grandfathered. So it's important to know when you've achieved these safe harbors, and if there's any questions, let us know, because as far as when these units count to go on the list gets a little complicated frankly. Not to get off track too much, but for comp permits, say, on Tuesday, the ZBA says, approves it, clerk signs it on Wednesday, that's when we count the units. This is before occupancy, before construction. So that's something to be aware of, and we do that to help communities get their 10% numbers up higher.
Can you clarify, there's a, where do you get a 40B, and this is a so-called friendly 40B?
Well, a friendly 40B would need municipal support, and, you know, they'd have to have local support, and that would be town manager board selectmen, various committees approving it.
Yeah, if they don't get local support?
If they don't get support, it's not a friendly 40B, and that goes through DHCD.
Excuse me, if the Affordable Housing Trust says they don't want to do an unfriendly 40B, Harbor Light says they don't want to do an unfriendly 40B, where is the term of art, friendly or unfriendly, where does it come from?
What does that mean?
Is it defined somewhere so that we can actually look at and apply it?
Yeah, well, it's listed in the guidelines under, you know, well, friendly 40B is more of a-
Term of art.
Term of art, yeah, thank you.
So how do we get to that? How do we define that?
Well, I can tell you one thing, if there's not municipal support, and there has to be a signed letter from the town manager, board of selectmen, chief executive officer, it's not a friendly 40B. I mean, that's the quick answer.
So most town boards split?
That happens, you know?
Friendly or unfriendly?
Well, it's, if, I would say if the town, you know, if the town entity, the chief executive officer, the board of selectmen, that are chief governing body, that's what we would consider a 40B. And we've had actually friendly 40Bs, other town boards suing each other. So I mean, I guess there's a relative degree of friendliness.
Do the flexing have to be unanimous? Do the flexing have to be unanimous?
They'd have to.
Or they wouldn't have?
Yeah, it depends on your charter, I would think, you know?
But the town can't vote, the people in the town, we can influence our flex-
You can influence it, yeah.
We can write to them, and they can do help, we have reasons of concern.
Yeah.
There's no vote for us to say, you know?
There's no technical vote, as if you were to have a tenant, special town meeting to vote on this project, no, that's not the way it works.
It would be non-binding.
Yeah, you could have a non-binding, and that's happened.
A what?
A non-binding resolution, and that may or may not be taken into consideration, you know, by the subsidizing agency, but-
Can residents sue the selectmen?
It's America, you can sue anybody.
To answer a question though, if there was a decision made at the ZBA, and we're going to get to that in a few seconds.
Right.
You would have the opportunity to sue or appeal the decision that was made, we're going to get into that, so it wouldn't be the selectmen you would be going after, you would be appealing the ZBA decision, but we're going to get into that.
Right, okay, so let's get into, and I'm not trying to avoid specific questions, because I know this is a tough-
To answer your question.
Thank you. All right, so let's get into what happens at the ZBA level. Hypothetically, not a specific case, drafting and issuing the comp permit decision, the ZBA has three decisions. They can deny it outright, they can approve as submitted, which frankly, never really happens. They can approve it with conditions, and this is the most likely outcome. And statistically, most 40Bs get settled at the local level, and approve with conditions, you know, can be number of units. Once we get into, and hopefully, there is a kind of a landmark SJC case that kind of spelled out what the ZBA really can look at and what they can't look at, and it's really sort of health and safety issues, not necessarily post-permitting issues, you know, the financial, you know, questioning, the profit limitation, there's certain things the ZBA can examine and can't. So let's say they've approved it, but with conditions, and the developer thinks that the conditions are onerous, he's asked for 140, or she's asked for 130, and you say, well, we'll do 58, and depending on the financing, everything, the developer may say, these conditions make the project uneconomic. If that's the case, the applicant, that's the developer, can appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee, and that's when we go through, that's a body of DHCD. They first try to mediate it through a council of councils, they all sort of sit around, if they can work it out, that's great, if not, it's essentially almost a trial, and there is a decision, who's right and who's wrong. A gentleman, the former council here, brought up the fact, he said 85%. It's about 70% of the time goes towards developers, but we are seeing more cases issued that have been decided at the town because of, you know, strong planning defense, underlying issues as far as, they, towns have done other things, they've adopted 40R districts, they've built other housing, so it's not as if you don't have a choice. Frankly, I think statistically, you're probably better if you can work a deal locally, but people may think differently about that. Appeals by other parties are made to the Superior Court of Land Court, so a butters oftentimes, even if the, you know, the ZBA says this, Housing Appeals Committee says this, project's going to get built, butters can come out and sue Superior Court or Land Court. And there's, there was a case recently in Stowe that had to deal with a water issue that overturned a HAC ruling that shut down a 40B. I'm not encouraging this, but there are other methods of appeal beyond the Housing Appeals Committee.
Do smart growth principles play any role in the appeal process at all? Is there any recordable value there?
Yeah, they have to, we added smart growth principles, I want to say probably back in 2001 with 40Bs, and they're still in place, but the Housing Appeals Committee will look at those issues. Frankly, in order for them to turn over a decision, or decide with the municipality, a lot of times, it has to be a fairly high bar, health and safety issues, you know, you can't turn around a fire truck, there's water issues, this is an industrial park with a Fortune 500 company that wants to come in, and things are pretty high, and I'm not sure if it's a rep or a senator, the term they use a lot is consistent with local needs. Is this project consistent with local needs? And there's almost a de facto understanding, if the town has achieved the 10%, there's a need for housing.
Does the concept of local need meaning that the residents of this development would be Hamilton residents?
Well, that goes back to, we do allow under 40B up to a 70% local preference, and that's within the guidelines, and I can tell you, you know, and that can be a town employee, it could be somebody who goes to school in town, obviously, it's a resident, it's no longer a former resident, so if somebody moves away, cannot be counted local. We do allow up to 70% local preference, there's a process for doing that, you have to demonstrate that there's a need for local residents, so, you know, if you have a housing authority, and there's 500 people on your waiting list for senior development, and this is a senior development, 70% of the units could go to local residents. Now, I can guarantee you that that's going to happen, because there could be a lottery, and they weigh it locally, and they, you know, there's some factors, but there is a local preference of 40B.
So it's not first preference, so we had a need for 70% of Hamilton people, or senior list to get in here?
So we had a need for 70% of Hamilton people, or senior list to get in here? There's not first preference? These, we're going to pick our Hamilton, we like first?
There would be a local preference up to 70%, but they'd still have to comply with, but we couldn't, we couldn't say only Hamilton residents live in this complex.
No, I know that, but they get first preference, but we're going to, we're going to...
They would get up to 70% local preference, but it's not, it depends, because sometimes these are done for, usually if it's new list, there's, there's a lot more interest in units. So there's generally lotteries, so they weigh...
Can you explain lottery? Because I thought, because I've seen other housing things in the paper, and it says lottery, so I guess that's anybody from any town? And then, is it pick it out of a hat and decide who gets what?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get into how that works at first, but the lotteries are conducted differently. I mean, I've seen some that are sort of like, you know, they've assigned numbers, like a bingo thing, and it's called out to public process.
Who determines that though?
Well, there are people that basically just run these lotteries. And they, they have to submit, backtrack what's called an affirmative fair housing marketing plan, and they would have to describe what they're going to do in the lottery and that plan.
Is it him, or is it the town?
The subsidizing agency would oversee the lottery.
So it would be him?
Who's him?
For answer.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, no, no, he'd have to submit affirmative fair housing marketing plan. The subsidizing agency, which is DHCD, Mass Housing Partnership, Mass Housing, would have to approve that plan. A third party, it could be a nonprofit, or there's people that basically just run these lotteries and monitor, you know? It could be a community action agency, it could be housing, you know, so it's sort of a care group, but we would have to approve the plan, or whoever the subsidizing agency is. A third party would actually do the lottery.
Excuse me?
Sure.
If a development plan is denied or approved with conditions and then appealed, can it be changed in the appeal process?
We're not, the affirmative marketing plan would just be...
Not that, not that.
Okay, sorry.
Plan itself. If you deny 50 units, a plan for 50 units for a town...
Plan, meaning a specific project?
Yes, a specific project.
Okay.
The project is denied.
Right.
Or the project is approved with conditions.
Right.
The developer appeals.
Right.
Can that development project be changed in the appeal process?
Yeah, oftentimes, there's negotiation that goes on at the Housing Appeals, and something else will come out. So it's a fluid process.
Who is in that negotiation of changing the development? Is the, is the board that denied it part of that process?
Well, you know, it would really be, at that stage, town council, whoever's representing the town. Sometimes the Housing Appeals Committee, they can remand it back to the ZBA to sort it out to some degree. But in most cases, it's going to be whoever the town council is, the council for the applicant, and they'd sort it out. But yeah, it can change. I mean, you could have a different number of units come out of the HAC. Let me get into a couple more slides that'll explain some of that, I hope. So this goes back into, let's just say, what, once the comp permit's built, who's, who's in charge of what? The subsidizing agency, and that again is Mass Housing, DHCD, Mass Development, Mass Housing Partnership, they're in charge of final approval. Basically, make sure that everything is, is above board as far as the comp permit and the requirements. We have to approve the regulatory agreement, deed rider, if it's an ownership unit, the monitoring agreement. So a third party is going to be monitoring this development in most cases, to make sure that people who, you know, because once these developments are built, ownership, people can sell them, they're profit restricted. So, you know, if they buy something for 180,000, that's an affordable unit, there's a formula based on how much they can make per year, per capital improvements, we have to find someone else who's, who's qualified to buy it. And the deed riders, you know, these, these, they're essentially good for perpetuity 99 years, so somebody can't buy a 40B development and turn around and sell it in a week for 500,000. Subsidizing agency, this goes back to some of the questions. We're in charge of lottery, at least, not necessarily doing a lottery, but proving a lottery agent. Fair housing, local preference, we, we sort of decide on that. Eligibility of the owners or tenants, you know, that people have to be income eligible, there's varied asset restrictions to buy a 40B home.
Are they screened? Are tenants screened? Is their background checked?
Yeah, I mean, most of these things, if it's a big 40B development, they have onsite, you know, the property managers do what they do, and that includes, you know, generally, query checks, background checks, that, that sort of thing.
That's what happens.
Yeah, I mean, and also, if you're going to buy a unit, you need to get a mortgage, so you have to be bankable.
These are...
No, I know, yeah, yeah. No, it's like any other development, I mean, whatever the process is. Now, different, different management companies have different, different levels of what they might, might or might look at, but I mean, in general, you know, they run queries and credit checks and everything else.
Is that for 40Bs that they have to do a query check? Because I, I know I've rented before, I never had somebody do those. They did, they did a credit check on me.
Yeah, they'll do a credit check. No, I don't think it's exclusive to 40B, but most of the big development companies will do it now.
Right. I have one other question on the tenants. So they qualify, and they're, how long is their, their lease? And then, what happens if, you know, say there's two fam, two, two people, it's a certain amount, and then one's not working for whatever reason?
Right.
And then their income goes up?
Right.
Is it like, oh, now you're at this income, you move out? I mean, what, how?
Well, there's, there's sort of a grace period, if people go over a certain amount, that they can do it for a period of time. But if somebody really goes over the amount, in a big 40B development, 300 units, that unit would, would, would go into a market rate unit, and they'd make another affordable unit for somebody else qualified. But that's the same problem with Section 8 or same issue, they have to go through annual recertification. We wouldn't say you have to leave tomorrow, you know, because they're generally just certified annually. So, and part of that is probably the property management issue of whatever development. So the subsidizing agency's also in charge of making sure that...
Can we just clarify a question that we just asked?
Yes.
Because we're discussing this, I mean, I want to make sure that we're accurate to answer your question. If there's a rental, I'm not sure that they would do a query check on those that are being rented. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, I think that's accurate. I mean, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of the bigger management companies do it, but I also think...
But I don't think it's mandatory.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's mandatory.
I don't, like, I can't...
All right, so, the, what's the responsibility of the town and the ZBA? They can review final engineering, architectural plans, issue the building permit, they do the inspections during construction. 40Bs are like any other type of development, they have to meet the state building code. I know sometimes building inspectors think, "It's a 40B, we can't do anything," but, you know, these things are all, have to meet state building code. Cost certification review, lapse of the permit, so the comp permit can expire for a period of time. If the comp permit expires, the whole process could start over again. Transfer of the comp permit, sometimes these developments are sold to other entities, particularly the rental ones. Changes of comp permit substantial or insubstantial. So when things were really kind of bothering out, we, you know, there were issues as far as, we saw some developments start off as rental, go to ownership, back to rental. We saw things that were age restricted, they couldn't sell the age restriction, so they wanted to be moved out. Those are substantial changes. This is all after permit approval. This is the picture of some 40Bs around the state, so you can have anything from a single-family home, I think that was a Habitat house, down in Westford here, this is what I think a lot of people view 40Bs as, is sort of large apartment complexes. There's another one in Attleboro. So there's a real variety of what, what, what 40Bs can look like. Now, as far as this district, I'll just leave this up here, so people can tell what town they're at. This is where, where folks are at the 10% list, and there's a variety, you know, boxes...
Is this 20, I'm sorry, is this current data?
This is current as far as probably about four months ago. Now, we, it's updated continually when the towns have new 40Bs or developments come on the list. We adjust the data. Frankly, if you want to know specifically the point in time, and my contact number's at the end, I can get you a list of what compromises Georgetown's 11.7%, you know, and inventory. What we have on our website is just the whole number, so number of units, number that count, denominator, numerator, and so forth. So it's a variety, I mean, some, like North Riddings is pretty close, some towns are way down, one of them is actually fairly close, 8.7, so if you had, I don't know, probably one large 40B, it'd probably be over 10%. These are the housing production plans in the district. They're good for five years, so I put in the approval date and expiration date. This is what allows you to do, if you do half of 1% or 1%, you get one to two years off. All these plans are posted on our website. The plans are approved by the planning board and the board of selectmen. They're public documents, so if you want to go online and read your town's plan, you can do that. Just go to DHCD's website, which is WWDHCD, mass.glove.dhcd backslash, sorry, and just type in housing production plans. Frankly, you're better off just Googling housing production plans. You'll, you'll get there. So this is my contact information, and I'm happy, we've got about another half hour to answer any questions.
I'd just like to still what you said, because I think the town meeting the other day, people in this room want an opportunity. Do you hear about the...
Do you mind standing up so I can hear?
Sure, you can do it. I'm happy to stand. My name's Phil Shields, I live at 721 Payton Road.
You can hold the mic, Paul.
I'm a director of...
Oh, yeah.
...of this project. Which way would you like me to face, Mr. Phillips?
The camera.
Okay. What I've heard tonight, and I just want to be clear, this is not the time to argue the merits of the case, although we could. I think we all want to know, when is the public going to be allowed to comment, to actually take a role in this process for the first time? And what I've heard from you is that we might be able to actually inject some thinking into the project eligibility letter if we stake out the ground properly and tell the agency that we want to be heard. We don't know what agency we're talking about, okay? But that's number one. Secondly, the minute the project eligibility letter comes down, we have zero time or a lot of time, depending upon the applicant and what the applicant wants to do before they file before the zoning board of appeals. That seems to be a very important period of time at which we can have a neutral discussion of this project. The minute it goes to the ZBA, I think we're going to lose, no matter what. I think that the appeal figures to show you that. Okay, so the next question is, the Housing, Affordable Housing Trust has said that Miles River needs the exact language from their minutes, they need a financial commitment from the town. If they need a financial commitment from the town, I've never heard anything about it so far, and I think, judging from what I heard at town meeting, the town wants to vote on such a financial commitment. And I know of no way you can appropriate funds in a town without going to a town meeting. But I just want to be sure I'm right on each of those points of view. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
We do have another guest speaker here, and I want to give him an opportunity to say a few words. So Clark Ziegler, if you don't mind.
Thanks.
And we'll take him.
I'll be quick. Fill up for a few minutes anyway. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm wearing a couple of hats. I'm the director of the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, and as Phil mentioned, we are one of the agencies that is authorized to finance and approve projects to the 40B process. I think we have financed projects with 40B, projects permitted through 40B in 47 cities and towns, I'm sorry.
So what was your name again for this?
I'm sorry, Clark, last name is Ziegler, Z-I-E-G-L-E-R. So we are directly involved in the process of, of the permitting process with Chapter 40B and projects where we are the, we're providing the financing. And, you know, have seen a lot of projects in a lot of different kinds of communities, and I'm happy to talk about how we go about that process. My organization actually was formed initially, and part of our core mission is to work with towns that, that actively want to increase their supply of affordable housing, board of selectmen, housing trust, housing partnerships, affordable housing committees. And we have, at one time or another, engaged more than 320 of the state's 351 cities and towns. So we have a pretty, you know, broad reach in terms of what different, how different communities deal with, with affordable housing issues. And the last, but not least, Bruce and Brad are my senator and representative, I live up the street in Ipswich. I was chairman of the finance committee for a number of years, and served in town government for close to 20 years. So I have a pretty good feel of both, I've known the town of Hamilton a little bit, but I also have a pretty good sense of how town government works. So just, I just want to make a couple of general comments, so we can open it back up for questions. The first is, forget for a moment that there's a potential proposal that, you know, a number of people in the room are concerned about. If this were a 40B a year ago, the question is, this law's been around since 1969, what's the best posture for the town of Hamilton to take? And the answer, based on all my experience, is you are always, always better off taking the initiative, figuring out ways that the, that the community can proactively look for opportunities to work potentially with a local developer, local nonprofit, to make things happen. We have, we've been involved with successful affordable housing developments, somewhere around 35 or 40 town, either town-sponsored, or town, projects either on town land or where, where town officials actively worked with a local developer or organization to make something happen. And those are very successful projects, all over the Commonwealth, as close as Manchester. We've done, you know, communities like Lincoln, Weston, Wayland, Sudbury, that have, that have been very successful in addressing affordable housing on their own terms, trying to find the kinds of projects that they would like to support and are willing to support. And frankly, that's the best way to get ahead of this process, because the law's been around for a long time, the law's not going to go away anytime soon, and that's by far the most effective way for any community of any type to have exercised the most control over what happens. Yeah?
So as a town, we know we're up against this, we should get together and come up with a plan that the town likes, not something that's being forced down our throats.
Let me get to my second, let me get to my second point. So, so that, once, the law, the law works the way the law works. So once, once a project is approved, is eligible to apply for conference of permit, gets a project eligibility letter, whatever that situation is at that time, the, the law works the way the law works. So you, you can't, app, app, no, wait, hold on, let me finish. That, there's been 47, just in fairness here, it's been 47 years since this law was enacted, and so no, no one prevented Hamilton or any other town from doing things to ensure that 40B would, would not be, you know, concerned. Projects, the town, the projects that are, that are not consistent with the town's planning couldn't happen. So, but let me make my second point, because I think it's much more relevant to what, what you're saying. When there is a proposal in front of a community, and there's controversy, there's, there's a buttership of issues, or whatever the case may be, it is always better to engage on the merits of that proposal, rather than just say, "We don't like it, we don't want it, hell no, we want to stop this." Because from a legal perspective, that carries virtually no weight. That's the purpose of the law, is, is to basically dismiss those arguments. So that, that's, that was the legislature's intent. Like it or not, and you may not like it, that's what, that's why the law's enacted, that's what the law does. What we can talk about, and we can talk about, you know, until the cows come home, there are enormous opportunities in this process to affect the course of a proposal, to affect the outcome. And saying, "We don't like it," is not one of those options, but saying, you know, "Does this site plan make sense? What's the rationale for this number of units? How's the traffic going to work? How's this affect groundwater?" You name it. Those are all legitimate questions that town boards have an obligation to look at, that residents of the community have an opportunity to bring up, that butters in particular have a chance to bring up. That's the way the process works. And the last thing I would say, I really could not disagree more about the idea that once a project gets a project eligibility letter, the train has left the station, it's going to happen, whether, whether people like it or not. If the ZBA denies, denies the project, it's going to be approved anyway. That is, from my experience, I've been doing this for 30-plus years, categorically untrue. That there are, when towns engage on the merits of projects and look at the specific facts and impose specific conditions, one thing Phil didn't mention, the way the law works, the burden of proof completely shifts. If, if a town denies a permit, and it's true, towns that just say, "No," without any, you know, qualifications, just without any specific conditions, just "No," lose on appeal the vast majority of the time. If a town approves, any town approves a Chapter 40B project with conditions, based on the impacts of that development, it shifts the burden of proof to the developer on appeal to show why that, those conditions are unreasonable and make the project impossible. So it completely shifts, you know, the process to grant conditional approval. And again, in our experience, in most cases where towns and the butters have legitimate concerns about particular projects and get into the specific discussion about, "How can we make this project work better? How can we come up with something that people can live with or are comfortable with or makes more sense?" Those things tend to, tend to be worked out most of the time, in my experience. So that's, that's my two cents worth, and I'll just open it back up for questions from the end.
I've got a question. So I would ask now, at this point, if you can stand and come to the microphone for the public community of the question.
Very quickly, could you just explain what a 40B allows a developer to do in terms of overriding local control of zoning?
Basically, lets a developer, as you said, with the microphone. Sorry.
Yeah, the key is it really allows a developer to override local zoning. So if it's zoned industrial, zoned commercial, two-acre residential, single-family, it can override any existing zoning. If you have a wetland bylaw that's stronger than a state, it can override it. When they apply for a 40B, they have to give a list of waivers, and you know, the obvious ones are zoning, all sorts of waivers that would otherwise not allow the project to be built. So they can, whatever the town has, it can be overridden.
To any limit?
No, not to any limit. I mean, there's limits as far as project size. You mean limit from waivers, or?
No, if there's something zoned for a certain level of density, or a certain level of acre, or something like that, they can override that, you're saying?
Right.
To one limit? And how do you find those limits?
Well, I mean, there's general guidelines as far as how many units per acre, you know, I think it's eight ownership, 40 rental, but they're not hard and fast. The bottom line is, if you're under 10%, the developer can come in and override whatever local bylaw or zoning you have.
So you're saying affordable housing is outweighing Farnham?
No, I'm not saying that. They still have to comply with any, they have to achieve full local stuff, but they, if it's, if it's stronger than whatever the state has as far as the policy on wetlands, you know, if you have a stronger local process than the state has, or a stronger bylaw, it can override that.
But the key word here is "can," not necessarily "will." So the, the case that Phil mentioned in the town of Stowe, there was a local board health bylaw that was stricter than the state DDP guidelines. The zoning board approved the permit and waiving the local bylaw on appeal. The local bylaw was actually upheld because there was some evidence that there was, there was some risk of groundwater contamination, there was a legitimate need for a stricter town bylaw. So it's all based on the merits of the case and the facts of the case.
My concern is this. You have bylaws for a reason.
Can you talk into the mic? I don't want to talk into the mic. Okay, I don't want to talk into the mic. Can you hear me?
No. Talk in the mic.
I can hear you.
I don't want to talk into the mic. I thought people were on television listening. I'm trying to. My concern is this. The bylaws are there for a reason. To protect the community, to protect the environment. That's why they're there. So, once again, the developer can come in with this 40B shield and just do whatever developer wants, really.
Not true, for a number, on a number of fronts. First of all, on the question of the number of units, the design, design of the project, there is a really extensive review that goes on before any project sees the light of day for project eligibility letter and goes before the zoning board of appeals. In our case, there are a number of projects where we see proposals, where we, we think the, the design, the layout, the density is not appropriate for a site, we send people back to drawing board, we don't approve a project, we don't think it makes sense. It's based on, there are some, if you go on, on the DXD website, I think our website, there are design guidelines that are pretty extensive. There's an obligation on us as an agency to adhere those guidelines and to review projects carefully. It is absolutely not anything goes, is, is far, far from that. And I have to say, you know, having been through a number of reviews of, you know, a number of projects, looking at local comments, looking at, you know, application materials, looking at, you know, you name it, the level of care in reviewing and approving these projects would actually, if you could, if you could sit in the room and we're looking at a project and making a decision, I think it would actually give you some comfort.
Can we sit there? No, I, I, can I ask one more question?
Yep.
So I'm, I'm just working, I'm, people work in the business world. We do RFI's, for post information, and we do RFPs. So we may think, you know what, so I work with software, we may want to use particular software. But we're like, let's be fair. So we invite four different companies to give us, we send out the same questions to all four companies. They come back with their proposals, we review them, we have demos, a group of us gets together, we make a decision. We look at the financials, who's giving us the best price, you know, what's going to cost the town in this case, who's going to protect the environment in this case. You know, we look at all these things, who, and if everybody comes up, nobody sees everybody else's proposal, it's done independently. I would like to see that down here. I would like somebody else to bid.
Well, it's an interesting point you bring up, and actually towns have done similar things where they've actually, they've issued a RFRs, they say, "We want a development in this site, so many units," and they put it out there and people will come in. You could do that.
Can we do that?
He's not in the staff department.
That's a local action.
Can we ask the selectmen, will we try to do that? Is that something we think we can do?
So that would be a question that I would ask you to go to the board of selectmen during this, it's a party, and ask that.
So one, one question though, Brad, it's important, if you come with the slide back up, Phil, it occurred to me that the town had actually filed a production plan.
There is a plan, but you, the way, it's a two-part process, which Phil can probably explain better than I do.
Right.
That, that there's a plan, but then you need to be permitting units at a sufficient pace to basically be exempt from other 40B projects. But there is a valid, as I understand, a valid plan.
So what I'm curious about is, is what progress has been made, and it would be interesting to see what has been proposed. So I think we may have an answer from Dave over here, but I think that's a critical part to this, because it isn't as if the town has not sought progress for affordable housing, it in fact has a plan on file. So the curiosity here is, what has it done to advance that plan and why has it been forwarded such that there's no available safe harbor, if in fact that's the case? Dave, go, Dave.
Hi, everyone. Dave Carey, Aiden Reagan Way. I probably have more information about housing than anyone in town government, maybe not, fortunately, but back when, around 2003, we formed the first housing committee. So it kind of all began there. The reason we formed the committee was because the selectmen were very concerned about our lack of compliance with 40B. And they said, you know, "What can we do?" And nobody really knew what 40B was. We got a group of five of us together, we met every week for over two years. We figured out what 40B was. We learned that if you filed a production plan and you could meet that level of production, which was quite a few units, because we were way, way behind the eight ball, we need about 200 units. And we set out to try to meet that plan. Over the next six or eight years, we produced eight units against 200. Why was it, why was the performance so poor? Lots in Hamilton, no matter how you look at them, cost about $150,000 absolute minimum, quarter acre lot. The town doesn't have the money to buy that. We tried to talk with owners about accepting a deed restriction. We had about a half dozen different strategies, we employed all of those, and basically, nothing could produce real production. The selectmen remained very concerned about 40B. The Junction came along, remember that project? So a lot of people were very unhappy with that. I will say, it appears to be a fairly nice project and things have settled down, but it was just as upsetting to people when that came about, whatever that was, 10 years ago. So the next idea for the selectmen was, all right, we have a plan, we can't make it, we need money. Let's participate in 40, in rather, in CPA, and that generates money for the town, and it does. It's generated hundreds of thousands of dollars that have to be spent on housing. So we are raising money. The problem is, what does it cost to produce a unit of affordable housing? Statewide, it's been around $75,000. So I don't care how many hundreds of thousands you have, you're not going to get to 200 units. Along the way, we met a number of nonprofit developers that do this for a living. The people at the Y were tremendous, we came very close to projects for them, it never worked. We met Andrew's organization, they were tremendous, they have, they run something like 800 units of senior housing in Beverly. They're very interested in putting an enormous effort to do things, and so we tried to produce this property, Firehouse Place. When they were done, and you know, you could think this is a sales pitch, when they were done, they had 14 mortgages to finance that property, it only cost the town $35,000. So we seem to have some kind of a method to move forward. Well, the next thing the selectmen thought is, we're still not there, we can't make decisions fast enough. Everything has to go through the selectment process and town meeting. So what most towns have done to get serious about this is they form a housing trust, which is like an instrumentality of the government. We did that. And until recently, I was the chair of that, Fred just took over. So now, we had money and we could make decisions more quickly, but the selectmen did have to be involved in approving those decisions. That's your special modification we made to our housing trust that almost no other town has, the selectmen have to say yes. So the selectmen did all these things and we had all this, all, all these elements put in place, but we still weren't hitting any kind of numbers. Now, and this is why people are very angry at town meeting and why they're angry now, is you feel that this thing came out of the blue, and I certainly understand what you're saying, but let me just walk through that very quickly and then you can decide from there. It has to be six months ago we first talked with Andrew about this property. This is a very long time ago. By the way, we constantly have things going on. We have a habitat project going on, we have a half a dozen of these things all the time that we're working on. But the key for us is site control. The developer, when they get site control, now we start the whole public base, we start to discuss it. Now, I know the people believe that Andrew has site control because he does, I believe, have control over one lot there, but you need more units than that, so site control would mean more than that. So this is, the developer does not have site control.
But he will this week. He will this week, he's closing on nowhere this week. All right? So he's got Farnham.
Okay. I hear you.
He's got, all right, he's got your agreement.
Yes.
And then he's got nowhere this week.
Yes.
So yes, he has site control. And he's trying to buy Alwells so that he can have the frontage.
And we immediately start doing everything we would do. Now, listen, we could have had meetings about this six months ago, but what would you do? What would we do?
I approached you over a month ago and you said to me, I went to your office and you said, "I don't know, nothing going on, nothing definitive."
Again.
Although you knew.
We constantly have, come to us with ideas.
I'm a resident, I couldn't tell.
All right, all right. All I'm saying is, what do you do? You can't do anything until there's site control, there's nothing to respond to. You haven't missed any opportunity, and you can ask the experts. So all I wanted to say is, you know, you could feel badly about us, but that is the process, we've been at this for 12 years, we produced eight units, we have a state law called 40B, you could see it's a very tough law, and you could complain, we didn't do much of anything, we only got you eight units in 12 years. But we're the ones that attended hundreds of meetings and did all this work, and it's just a very difficult problem. Hamilton is a very wealthy area, and to try to produce affordable housing in it is, we would say, almost impossible. So anyway, thank you.
Question for you.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so Gordon College, does any of Gordon College fall in Hamilton? And I know there's, you know, Conwell.
No.
Conwell, sorry, sorry.
All of it.
All in Hamilton, right?
Yes.
So I know there's families that live, like, live there, right?
Yes.
And they probably have zero income because they're going to school. So do those folks count as low-income houses?
No. No.
Why not?
It's restricted. There's a lot of things that make something be affordable, and one of the keys, it has to be marketed, what's the term?
Affirmative.
Affirmatively. You have to let anybody in, and they don't.
It's the same reason Asbury.
In Asbury, unfortunately, I'll tell you, we, we put in hundreds of hours on Asbury. Is there any way we could include Asbury? Because that almost gets us 50 units, is that what it is? So, I mean, that was the holy ground for us. We went to the state, we did everything we could on that, but it is, it's a restricted property.
Is your authority responsible for Hamilton's classification of the various preparations in this?
No.
Who's responsible for that preparation?
So the state has those numbers, and they're updated from time to time. We're around 2.7%. We would say we've confirmed that. You know, we've counted the units, 2.7%, we need to be at 10. So we need to have 250 units, we have about 50.
Okay, so that's a discussion that should be taking place. Brad, before we do any further...
I have one question.
Please.
I just would like to understand the process. So did Harbor Light, did you seek Harbor Light to come in? How did the land transaction happen?
So, when, when we started, when we created a production plan, and we'll share it with everybody, there's a lot of ways you could try to produce units. You could do one-z, two-z, which is kind of a habitat thing. They find a lot, and then, you know, you build something on the lot. By the way, we even found a lot, it was $140,000. The selectmen in the end just felt that, listen, that's so much revenue, we're so short, so tight on money, that in the end, we sold that property and used the cash for other purposes. But frankly, what good would one unit do you? So we decided, listen, we just, just as a group of five people on a committee with limited funds, we can't do this, we can't hit these kind of numbers. You have to work with professionals. Well, who are the professionals? They could be for-profits or they could be nonprofits. Well, the 40B world is, I think, mostly nonprofits, I don't know if that's true or not. But we had such a good experience with Harbor Light on the Firehouse Place, we were extremely impressed with the YMCA people, I don't know if you saw the property they built. But the problem is, there's no land either, so where do you get land for these things? So, you know, that has been the snag all along, is you're trying to put so many things together that just don't fit.
Well, how did Harbor Light connect with Farnham is my question?
I don't know that.
How did that connection with me, was that done privately?
Yes, of course, yeah. It's a private owner.
So, so, first of all, just want to reset things here a little bit. Number one, we intended tonight to be a discussion of Chapter 40Bs so that everyone would understand it. With regard to this specific project, there's obviously a lot of concern about that, and it would seem to me that the appropriate thing to do, to have the kind of questions that are being asked answered properly, would either be for the board of selectmen or for the housing committee to hold a discussion, to discuss this specific project, so that people's questions are being answered. There are a couple of big points here, though, that I want to make sure that we get at tonight. And one of them is the issue of what comprises the 10% account. And I will tell you that in all of the years since 40B has existed, there has probably been no issue that has been more controversial than what should count in the 10%. And in fact, Brad and I have been involved in numerous legislative efforts to actually get more units counted. But here's the thing, until you meet one of these criteria, a community is always vulnerable to a Chapter 40B project. And one of the things we generally say is, your insurance against having something just come up where you don't want it, is to plan where you do want it and try to get there. That's an important point. And there is a plan in place that I think deserves to be looked at and so people can understand. But I do think it's important for just a minute to get some clarification on what counts toward the 10%. And I don't know if either of our experts are prepared to do that tonight, but there are a number of things that were put in by emergency regulation. Clark, is that 2008? It might have been even earlier. There were a number of things that were actually added to that 10% account that stretched beyond the definition so far that we've used here tonight. So maybe, Phil, can you touch on that just a little bit?
Right.
It's a really important point.
And we'll just go back to the slide, but basically, they have to be part of a subsidized development, built or operated by a public agency, nonprofit, or limited dividend organization. At least 25% of the units must be affordable to 80% AMI. The deed restrictions for rentals must run 15 years for ownership, it's the minimum of 30. The units must meet affirmative marketing, so in other words, you can't just give out the units to anyone. We started, and this is one of the things, the senator was, we started cutting group homes back in 2001. Other things that count, sort of away from this slide on the 40B list, are existing public housing stocks, state and federal housing. What doesn't count is a Section 8 or what's called now Housing Choice Voucher, where that voucher is tied to a person. So Joe Smith can move from Hamilton to Wayland to Boxer, wherever they want, because they can move around. If it's a Section 8 project-based subsidy, which means it's tied to a physical location, that does count. Since I've been working on 40B for about 10 years, every year, there's bills filed to count manufactured homes. It's possible to count accessory dwelling units, mother-in-law apartments, but it's difficult because of affirmative marketing. If you go and get units, you know, the gentleman was saying, the Community Preservation Act, if you wanted to buy an existing home, put a deed restriction on it, go through affirmative marketing, you can get units to count on that way, but frankly, that's an expensive and cumbersome process to do that. So that's it in a nutshell, but as you were saying, 40B has been a moving target. Every year, bills are filed to count. I mean, some of the things that have been filed are sort of ludicrous, that they want things counted. We had a town wanting to count prison cells at one point. And, you know, that'll give you an idea of the animosity out there at certain towns, so. It's, you know, but right now, this slide here is the key that counts.
So, town meetings spoke too clearly, slowed things down. That was, sorry, Scott Madder, Board of Selectmen. Town meetings spoke too clearly, I thought, firmly slowed things down related to just potential project. Everybody had a lot of good things to say. Some of the stuff that resonated most with me was one of the things that Clark said about, it's best to fight on the merits of this, that's one of the things I heard. There's a lot of concerns about those things, septic, or traffic, and access, and property values. All those things are, you know, been many places of being shared. Phil, I think, was really articulated about a couple of things, about what is the public process to get ahead of this PEL, the letter thing? So we can share what our concerns, our inputs are. And the bit about the financial commitment of the town, we control purse strings, it's a town-run place altogether, so I think those are important things. And having Harbor Light's community run a forum, or somehow with the right boards and committees of the town, to then have a focused thing on what this proposed project is, was necessary. I presume everybody wants that. That's kind of a question, I guess. We need something that focuses on that. Good. You know, just wanted to figure out ways to help move things forward. Well, we're getting thrown out of here 7:34 minutes ago, so.
Scott, can we get a commitment from Harbor Light that they'll hold up on the PEL application until we have these discussions?
We always would.
What?
We always would. We just, the reason we haven't been public yet is because of the site control issue. But yes, we would do that here, we just do that everywhere. And anybody's welcome to check that out.
Hi, I'm Conway Felton, I'm also a butter. I think you just answered my question, because one of the slides indicates a specific timeline that should be followed by the ZPA. So my question is, has day one been established?
No, there.
Thank you.
There's no, there's no project eligibility letter. I mean, I know people are, have strong issues, but I frankly came in here to do a general 40B presentation. The first I heard about this project was when I walked in the room. So, yeah, and we just, but, but I think it's great, the idea about having a forum with the potential developer. But as of today, there's no eligibility letter, there, this timeline process on this slide is not activated, or it's early days.
Do we know which of the four agencies, the PEL, would be starting?
I don't.
I will tell you, Mr. Shields, if you would like to know. What I, when we do it, how's that?
Tell everybody, why in the world, everybody.
We will tell, we're happy to tell her that.
Sally Felton, 719 Bay Road, I'm in a butter as well. My question to you is, how many 40Bs have been built next to a school in the Commonwealth?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I'm sure it's happened.
I want to know where, please.
I don't know if I can make a thing out of it.
No?
Yeah, okay.
Email us the question, and we will. Does the school committee matter, we say?
Well, the school committee could submit, or, you know, during the project eligibility letter, they can comment on whatever they would like, including the school committee.
This is probably also a good time to clarify exactly how the comprehensive permit application works. And so when in fact it's filed, the ZPA is not the only agency that's consulted, it is the agency that coordinates hearing from the other agencies. So they all have input as to what they think should or should not be in a comprehensive permit, or whether there is a reason to not allow the comprehensive permit to begin with. So for example, the discussion, or the point was made about whether or not a comprehensive permit trumps everything, well, the answer is, it does not. But it's important to go back to the history of this for just a moment, to understand why that is. And if you go back to the late 60s, when Brad probably wasn't alive, and I was about five years old, one of the reasons this law came about was the fear that suburban communities were developing zoning and other laws for the purpose of preventing the construction of affordable housing. So the reason 40B was enacted, and I'm not saying I'm a defender of it, and most people at North Texas, we know that I've tried to change it a lot, but the reason it was enacted was to allow those laws to be stress-tested, to see if in fact they were being put in place to protect the community, or to prevent affordable housing. So the considerations, and you can read these in the regulations, and will help you to get those, include things like, would a project be able to be protected against fire? Would it jeopardize a natural resource, like a drinking resource, drinking water? Would it in fact have a detrimental effect on the environment? Would the density be inappropriate, and an inappropriate use of the land? Now, the reason that that comes into play is that oftentimes, suburban communities would develop large lot zoning, two or three acres. And so many people would say, well, that's not appropriate, so what is appropriate? Well, you have to test that density to see if it could work, and that's part of the purpose of a comprehensive permit. But it's important to understand, and that's why we need to do some more communication about process. Who is consulted by the ZPA? It's not as if the ZPA makes this decision in a vacuum. And in fact, it gets lots of input from other agencies. But it is critical to understand, in my humble opinion, that when the ZPA makes a decision, it has to defend that decision, particularly if there's a housing appeals committee, an appeal made. And so that's why the ZPA has to gather information, so that if it seeks to deny something, it has a rational basis to do so. Now, I mentioned consistency with local needs, and that's an important concept, and again, I will continue to stress that. But one of the issues of consistency with local needs is that if you are under 10%, the law presumes that you have a local need for affordable housing. Without looking at preferences, it just presumes that the community has that need. So then the question becomes, are there other needs, or are there other issues that overcome that need for housing? And in some cases, that's true. Now, here's one thing to remember, that oftentimes, conditions can be attached, but those conditions generally have one standard, and that is, they cannot make the project uneconomic. So when somebody asked about whether or not the project can be modified in the appeals process, the answer is that it can, and generally, that's to make a project that's uneconomic economic, so that it can work, but still meet local needs. So the difficulty with all of this is that in many cases, it's difficult to articulate a bright-line standard, because it's, the law is meant to be tailor-made to an individual community's local needs. So there are general guidelines, for instance, about zoning, about 40 rental units on an acre, or eight homeownership units on an acre. But the difficult part of all of this is that you're dealing with a moving target. And the best defense, if you don't like a particular project, in my humble opinion, is an offense, is to say as much, not what doesn't belong someplace, but also what does belong in a particular place or any particular community. And again, the more proactive a community can be, the more effective it is at getting projects that it wants, as opposed to ones that it doesn't want, and to get them where it wants them, as opposed to where it doesn't want them. But again, I think communication and education can go a long way here, because you do have a lot of ways that you can address this issue, but you have to know the guidelines. If you're going to deny it, it has to be for specific reasons. If you're going to attach conditions, they can't make it uneconomic, and they have to be for a reason. There is a lot that you can do to navigate through this, and a smart developer knows that and will work with you, so you don't get to the place of trying to make unreasonable requests, and you actually get the project that the developer wants, but does it in a way that doesn't have huge opposition. So there's a long way to go here, but again, I agree with Chairman Manning's comment, that there needs to be some very specific communication and some forms about this. Brad and I will do the best we can to get you any information you need, like about what counts toward the 10%, or what committees are contacted with the ZPA. That's all readily knowable, but this is a good time to sort of take a deep breath, and to say, okay, what are all the steps here, and how can we engage those steps? Because it is meant to be a public process, so I'll just leave it at that. So with that said, we're now 10 minutes over our time. Thank you to the Hamilton Wyndham Library for allowing us this space. And again, reach out to us if you have any further questions. And Scott, through you, through your Board of Selectmen. I suggest that we get a forum as quick as possible. Thank you, everyone.